Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this committee a whole meeting for Monday, May the 7th. Before we begin, I'd just like to mention that Councilor Ross will not be present at the meeting this morning and not this evening either. Personal issues. All right. First item is the agenda. We would make a small change on the agenda. We'll be moving item eight up ahead of item number six to the time restraints and timelines. Said that, may I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda as presented? That, Councilor Thompson, Councilor Crowe, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to the minutes. May I have a motion to adopt the April 9, 2018 Committee to Hold Minutes as presented? Over, please. Counselor? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried.
Oh, I have a comment on this topic. I knew I had one. It's just a small correction. If from Paul Markler, it's Kathy and Ted, not Tim.
So just on this keeping.
Just on this keeping.
Yeah. So noted. Okay, moving on to our register petitions and allegations. Gallery two, 2017, 2018, year end report for 2018, 2019 by David. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, here it is. It looks... Oh. It's a big buddy, same port one.
Yeah. There's a power...
Oh, yeah, on the side.
Oh, sorry.
Here we go.
Okay.
There you go. All right. Thank you. Yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Nice to see you all. I'm here to opine you on Gallery two. It's been a busy spring. We've just closed the Boundary Showcase of the Arts in the Reed and the West Galleries. This year, we had a great uptake. There were 58 individual artists submitted. We had over 100 submissions and made over 100 people at the opening. So, all in all, this was my first go around with the showcase, so we're considering that a success. Definitely looking forward to next year and how we can make changes and update our programming offerings and try to involve the public and schools more as well forward. At the same time, we had, it's called Art Attack. It's an after-school program that's run by Carol Mitchell. Previous years, it had run downstairs. This year, we ran it upstairs in the Fog Gallery. Again, a really great corollary to the Boundary Showcase. It's all the young, upcoming artists, and they had their own opening exhibition for the artists and their parents, and there were probably 150 kids and their parents in the gallery checking stuff out and eating cake on the steps. So it's really great to see all the young people involved in the arts and actually in the gallery down there. And as I mentioned, the showcase came down on Saturday, so we're doing installations this week. We have a new suite of exhibits coming in the Reed Gallery as Whack 'em Sack 'em, just in time for playoffs. Thank Ted Fogg for programming it this way. Glenn Clarkson is based out of Vernon, and it's a series of large, interactive hockey paintings of kind of iconic hockey scenes. It started with a full-size wall mural of a table hockey game, and it's gone on to depict these iconic, you can see Gordy Howell, hundred people and that kind of thing. But they're large-scale and they're interactive, so some of them you can pull on and they move, so we're looking forward to that coming in. As with all our exhibits, the opening reception is on Saturday from May, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. This year, we're trying something a little different. We're doing an artist talk on Friday evening with Glenn, so it'll give him a chance to speak more fully about the work and the show and give us a sense of his other work. In the Fog Gallery, we have preferred drawing pictures. Don Maydie moved to Nacosp several years ago from Calgary. He's well-known in the artist trading card, male art scene from the 70s on, very tech-based, fun and poppy work. And then, in the West Gallery, Wendy Too Good has a series of elaborately, needle-pointed and applied depictions of daily life in Nacosp. Don and Wendy are partners, so it'll be a really interesting playoff to each other in two galleries. So that's what's coming up. As you know, our year end is March 31st, so I just thought I'd do a few highlights from the year. We did have a successful leadership transition from Ted and Terry running things. I've come in and found my legs, as it were. Really, the big picture, our year-end revenues were $309,000 and our year-end expenses were $302,000, so we have a positive net variance of $7,000, which is pretty much right where we want to be. Looking forward to, like, 2018, 2019. The highlights this year, I'm really pleased to announce that we're able to offer a modest health benefits package for staff. It's quite gratifying to be able to do that for a small arts organization, and I'm hoping going forward that that'll be a draw as we have succession funding going in the organization. We were also successful in sourcing a $10,000 Phoenix Foundation grant for doing interior signage and wayfinding updates on the site. I don't know if you've noticed, but we've got, I've counted, there's about eight different appendages of signage going on around, so this'll allow us to work with a consultant to, and stakeholders, to figure out, sort of consolidating the way we're communicating what we're doing and all the different things we need to do. It's quite complicated once you start thinking about it. There's car owners, there's pedestrians, there's special events, there's tourist information, there's regular information, there's civic information. So hoping to move to where we don't have volunteers dragging signs in and out of the gallery every day to show the world. Quite excited to receive that support from the Phoenix Foundation. And then, we've added an additional spring fundraiser. You might have seen posters around town. We're doing a Starlight Benefit Dinner raffle, so a $20 ticket gives you a chance to win a custom dinner for yourself and seven others at a luxury home on Christina Lake later in the summer. The draw is June 29th at 4:00 p.m. You can get your tickets from Gallery two staff, Big Shot, or pretty much any Gallery two volunteer will probably get you up there soon. And then, so our operating budget, it's pretty much a hold-the-line budget for us. We've, we're anticipating more summer employment grants and an increase in our fundraising revenues, so total revenue projected at $351,000 and total expenses, similar. So, any questions?
Counselor Butler.
How many tickets are you selling for the raffle and the dinner tomorrow?
We're selling 500 tickets. And the dinner is, once you win, assuming you do, the caterer will work with you to develop a meal and wine pairing to your tastes. So it's a really custom, we're trying to work with...
Outside on the deck or inside?
I think it'll be outside. I don't have the full details on the location, but it's meant to be a really special experience. We're trying to work with regional producers and regional wineries.
Counselor Trump. Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Thank you for the good report. It's really nice to see the gallery doing so well, and I love the fact that you're including the young people, getting them interested in art and how they can move forward with that is really important, and they can get that while they're living in their, you know, the community that they're raised in, so much the better. And Houston, in your signage, I know often when I've walked past a gallery or driven past, I thought, gee, wouldn't it ever be good if there was maybe like an electronic sign out there? I don't think $10,000 would probably come anywhere near to covering the cost of that, but I'm just wondering, is that something that you considered?
Oh, thanks for the question. Yes, essentially, and one of the, one of the key things with the Phoenix Foundation grant is, really, we need some design direction and some professional assistance. With the interior signage updates we've done, I'm quite comfortable with working with graphic designers and working on that, but the exterior signage is quite complicated in terms of all those different things and what's available. So we're gonna find out industry best practices and what's available, and definitely try to plan for the future that way.
It's just such a good, you know, everybody drives by there and, you know, a nice big sign there with...
It's a tremendous opportunity. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Thompson.
Just a couple of things. I'm really pleased to see that you're able to offer some health benefits to your employees, but my question is, what impact do the budget, is it going to be when the MFP premiums are gone and there's going to be that tax that's going to be levied against employers? Is that, have you any idea what impact that's gonna have on the gallery?
My understanding with the payroll tax is it's over, operating budget's over, I think it's a million and a half, so we won't be impacted by the payroll taxes section, but that's something we looked at with the board before we went with the...
Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next item, which is the regional topics for Area D, and our corrector's not present today, so I'm assuming you're not going to be having that. And seeing as we modified the agenda, we'll jump right up to item 8A, under the proposed bylaws for discussion section, which is Bylaw 1958 A5, fees and charge, bylaw amendment, business fees and charges from development engineering services. The recommendation is the committee at a whole recommends to council give the first three readings to the City of Grand Forks Fees and Charges Amendment, bylaw number 1958 A5, 2018, at the May 22nd, 2018, regular meeting. Over, please. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Butler.
Sorry, it just takes a while to load these pages on the spread. So we're proposing 5% on gross daily revenue up to $2,000 per day. We discussed this last time, and we're looking at maybe increasing the amount per day. Other cities have quite a higher revenue, depending on whether it's a nonprofit or for-profit, anywhere from $4,000 to $8,000, I've seen on other bylaws, so I would be interested in increasing that a little bit. Also, I was wondering where fees and charges are included for, like, this is for all public property, or do we have a different fee rate, say, if somebody's renting the park, but then they want to use the Hardball Cafe, and they're using more facilities in the park? Is there a base fee and then an extra fee if they're using bleachers, an extra fee if they're using the kitchen facilities? And what about the senior center? Is that a different fee than if they're just using a first-class park?
Morning. So it's designed to be pretty simple in terms of how we read in the bylaw. A lot of the, is it a nonprofit, does it need to be a custom agreement, is addressed at the discretion of the chief administrative officer. So right now, without having anything in our fees and charges bylaw, we don't really charge because we don't have the authority through that bylaw to do it. So the goal here was to get something in place so that we could start the process and tweak it over time. In terms of an increase, I mean, by all means, if council wishes to increase that number, that could work. The senior center is a separate entity, so we leave that line to the Grand Forks use. Not sure that's official, but it is senior society, yeah, as a building. We don't currently rent out the park, per se. What this looks to address is fortunately use of that park, so that if someone is using that park and making money fortunately, then we recognize that they aren't necessarily contributing to our tax base, and we're able to make up for that through an agreement under this bylaw.
Counselor Trump and Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Thanks, Kavini, you actually answered a couple of my questions there, but, you know, I think I had mentioned about the Colona. They've got, say, fees and charges part of their bylaw here, and I understand we're starting off, you know, start out slow and then, you know, see where that goes and then see what we can build in. What I did like about what they have in theirs is, you know, the two different rates. They still have a set rate for nonprofits. It's very minor. It isn't, it isn't a large amount, and I like that. Yeah, they may have to pay a little bit, but it's not gonna be anything really onerous. And then, they have a second category, which is for dedicated events, which of course deals with the gate, you know, the gross revenue that they're gonna be making. And I did mention that before, they've got up to 8%, so we're looking at 5% of gross daily revenue. They've got up to 8% and to a maximum of $8,000, which is substantially more than what we're looking at. Canfest, this time around, is anticipated to be having, I think it's up to 12,000 people. And so if that's $100 just for one thing for 12,000 people, that's basically a million two for gross. So, you know, they could be looking at 400,000 each day. So I don't think it's unreasonable for us to, I mean, that event is coming here, it is in our community, they are benefiting from our, all of the resources that we have, all of our city infrastructure, everything else. So I certainly would be amenable to seeing that 2,000 figure at least double to four if the rest of council doesn't have to take it out.
Counselor Allen.
A couple things. I don't believe Canfest will be using Gifford Park this year. Chuck has bought his own acreage, and they've already started work on it. So the fencing is going up this week, the land's already been cleared, so he's, we've already agreed to a temporary use permit on that property where he's setting up the canaground, so he's got L.B. lighting coming in and that's, okay?
It's a specific James Thomas.
You're just talking about the use of James Thomas. Okay, so if you were to charge, okay, so this gets back to, so we've got the GFI Fall Fair, and we've got Park in the Park, and we've got Canfest. Okay, so if you want to charge those groups user fees to use, to get the park, you know, the Fall Fair, the Park in the Park, and then you've got vendors and food trucks. Okay, so let's just take Park in the Park, for example, and they bring in X number of food trucks. It draws more people into town, and they charge the food trucks a percentage in order to participate in Park in the Park. So what percentage is the city gonna get? Are they gonna charge a flat rate to Park in the Park, or are they gonna charge the commercial vendors a separate rate and collect directly from the food truck vendors? And does that now mean that the GFI has to pay back the city for the time, the seven days that they're gonna be using James Thomas Park? So I'm not sure where you cut off on this.
Counselor Trump.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Just having this particular bylaw in front of me from Colona, which would address the kinds of issues that Councilor Allen was talking about, they have a nonprofit rate and they have a commercial rate, and that is, there's a park rental section. The rate is based on the number of hours, so that's our, the facility is used, and it's very minimal. It's like 30 bucks, actually 12, well, it's $12 for additional hours over a three-hour minimum rate, which is $36.30, so it's, it's a very minimal rate. And we could, my thinking on this is that down the road, as we develop this policy, we could be looking at tailoring that to even, even a smaller amount, because last time when we talked about this, I was concerned that nonprofits wouldn't be gouged. We could put a minimum on there if they were, if they were making a minimum of under $500, we could charge them nothing. I'm sure there's ways that we could figure it out that would not be penalizing at all for nonprofits, but that the city would be able to, you know, receive some funds for the use of our properties.
Counselor Hammond and Counselor Butler.
It still doesn't answer the question, who is going to be collecting the revenue from the commercial vendors, like the food truck drivers, food truck vendors? Would that be the city having to do that, or would that be coming from the Fall Fair and the Park, on the Park in the Park people? Secondly, these events take place on the backs of volunteers who have no money. They try to work with a minimal budget every year, they look for sponsors to help put these events on. If we started charging the Fall Fair and Park in the Park a user fee to use those, those events would not take place. I can tell you right now, those events would not take place. If you wanted to charge a commercial fee, if some business came and said, I'm gonna have a trade show and I'd like to use it in City Park, then I can see that happening, but when it's our own nonprofit organizations holding an event, and these big events for Grand Forks, which, which put us on the map and bring people into town and help our economy, I just, I don't see the, I can't see that happening. I don't think it's prudent. I think we're gonna lose some of these events if we start charging them day rates to use our facilities.
Mr. Gates, just a quick question, this, this bylaw, or is the intention of this bylaw to address these concerns? Obviously, it is correct.
The intent of this bylaw is not as a facility use fee. The intent of this bylaw is to authorize staff, if someone is making money using our public lands, that we can recoup a cut, at the very least, as in item two, the cost of what a business would pay for a business license if they were here permanently. So I hear what Counselor Trump is saying about Colona renting out its parks and, or and facilities, and this is not intended to address a rental of space. It's intended to address the difference between a business coming into town and making money off of our public spaces without paying taxes or paying for a business license necessarily.
Okay, so on the Fall Fair or...
Farmers' market.
Or the farmers' market?
Well, there's some, there's some discretion here for, for the chief administrative officer to make a separate arrangement, but there's also, you know, if, if the farmers' market is charging whatever they charged to be there, why not get a Baca vendor for the city, recognizing that these are businesses a lot of the time setting up in there, and that generally speaking, we're talking about less than, than $5, right? If you take 5% of whatever they're being charged, I don't see them charging more than a hundred bucks a policy, I think, so. I don't believe it to be an undue burden on folks that are making money, and certainly we have good discretion for a committed nonprofit or what have you, for the CAO to say, hey, we recognize that this goes above and beyond just making money in our town.
So the underlying message is monetary gain, and that's what would be the basic primary consensus then, for this.
Commercial.
Yeah.
You guys next one.
Counselor Butler, then Counselor Thompson, and then we have Lee first row, and then Counselor Trump.
Yeah, just a quick comment, with this being a commercial use of public space, and if you're making $2,000 a day, I think the, the understanding would be, the more money you make, the more people you're probably drawing to your event, the more people you have using your facility, the more wear and tear you have on your assets. This is about asset, renewal asset replacement, and I know with the use of James Johnson Park for the Canfest, you've got a lot of the large vehicles coming in, there's imprints being made in the field, and I know a lot of baseball players when they're running in the outfield are getting annoyed at tripping in the holes that are made. So, I mean, we have to pay people to come in and maintain that grass when you switch it back over for the GFI and different things, so there is a cost to maintaining those assets. And I think the more people you're gonna have using them, the more cost you're gonna have to maintain them, the more wear and tear you have on your bleachers, on your Hardball Cafe, and these things are, I think, 2,000, and it's just a bit low when you've got larger events, you need to cap it at about 4,000.
Counselor Thompson.
Just hearing all of the discussion, I don't have a problem with charging, but we've only seen what Colona, or heard what Colona does, and I personally would like to know what other communities our size, that host events do when it comes to the use of public property. I think the only commercial event that would make any substantial amount of money is Canfest, and he gives back a lot of money to the community out of the proceeds, so I wouldn't want to discourage that either. I don't know what, in places like Colona, if, if those people that are using their facilities are returning anything to the community. So I think before we proceed on this, I would like to see further investigation and another report come back that does a comparison, and then we can make a better informed decision.
Katie Nacron, then Counselor Trump and Counselor Crowe.
Yes, thank you, worship, through you to staff, Kate Phyllis, who we got before I forget. Would this be enforced through bylaw services, and if so, would that come into effect this summer, or are we looking at a longer timeline? Another bylaw set for three readings, May 22nd, so would we look at this summer or next summer, or?
Mr. Gates.
So the bylaw would come into effect as soon as it were adopted, whenever it might make it through the process. It would not be bylaw services that would be enforcing it. Right now, generally, we have an event request for groups looking to use our facilities, City Park, James Thomas Park, that type of thing, so it'd be part of that process that would be calculated and worked out on there.
Just a follow-up, if I may, then. So obviously, for large events like Canfest, yes, there's a demand request permit that comes through the city, but let's just say food truck were just to set up in City Park one day, would that vote your bylaw services, or like, how would those revenues then be collected?
Right now, in order to set up a food truck on One First Street, or on one of the city's parking lots, you require a site license, and that goes through development engineering approval.
I think, sorry, the point is being missed, not if somebody has done this correctly. If someone has done this process correctly, then that's already worked out. If someone were to just do it, like, just pull up a trailer and set up there without the appropriate fees and permits, is that bylaw?
Yes, and any bylaw in fraction is enforced by our bylaw enforcement officer.
Counselor Trump. Counselor Trump and Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yes, my intention is certainly not to make it difficult for any nonprofit organization, I'm very supportive of them, always have been, and this bylaw right now, as it stands, we've been told is a start. We would look at maybe other possible solutions or other possible models. I'm not saying that this should go in there right now. What I'm concerned about is just exactly what I mentioned at my first talk, was about the 5% gross daily revenue up to 2,000. I'd like to see that increase. The other thing I'd like to make about the Canfest organizers is it's wonderful, absolutely wonderful, that they contribute money back into the community. However, they choose the organizations that they will support, and I believe that there are other organizations who are definitely, who would merit getting support that Canfest does not choose. So were the money that they were to be giving the city in lieu of the money that they gift to these other organizations, then the city would be able to make the choices of which organizations they would feel would be the better merit for that, for those funds. So that's another point I think we should take into consideration.
Counselor Crowe.
Well, that was interesting, but, yeah, so instead of the people that make the money deciding which volunteer groups would receive, and I think it was $50,000, something like that, then we're gonna ask that they give the money to the city, and then we decide who we think is worthy as groups to get the money. Like, I'm not sure where that's coming from or why. It seems that Canfest has been a target of councilors for a couple of years now since it started, and there's concern expressed every year, and what gets forgotten or gets buried in, oh, nonprofit this, nonprofit that, nonprofits have really never had an issue with any of the park stuff, but what gets missed is the, or not mentioned, is the amount of money that comes into the community, not just the city. And people don't just, that come for Canfest, they're not just camping in the lot, and there's been concerns about, oh, Charlie's making us money, blah, 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 right? They're staying in motels, they're eating in restaurants, they're staying at D and Bs, there's people that are... there's people that are actually, I believe, doing Airbnb while Canafest is on. It brings a ton of money into the community, just like the GFI does, right? So, those are two big draws, and they do actually put you on the map. And nickel and dime people, and to say instead of $2,000, $4,000 is just kind of strange. And yeah, it makes no sense, sounds like personal agendas, never mind.
Counselor Hamer, then Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I'd be opposed to raising this at all. I agree with the 5% to a maximum of $2,000 based on the reason why it's being put into place, as Kevin has explained. And as far as the city getting involved in charitable donations, like Canafest gave back $50,000 to the community last year to a number of different nonprofits, mostly youth groups. And I don't think we're in the business to decide which charity's gonna get more. It's gonna have to go out as a fee for service. I don't know how we can donate it, and I don't think we're in a better position to decide who should get that money. If an event organizer has extra money that he wants to give back to the community, then I say let him make the decision of who he wants to give it to. And it changes every year. Kudos to Chuck Verbiere for doing this and supporting the community so much. I don't want to nickel and dime him out or scare him away from running this huge grant because it's a huge economic boost for this community. So, I would vote for this bylaw as long as we do not increase it. It can always be looked and reassessed in years down the road, but we need to start somewhere. And based on what Kevin said, I'm in agreement with the way it's set up and it's at the discretion of the CIO, but I don't want to see events being gouged.
Counselor Thompson, then a gentleman in the back row, and then Counselor Butler.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. The city got out of giving no press any a number of years ago because we had a certain amount in the budget that was always being real or subscribed. And so, now we have the fee for services like the museum, Gallery Two, and I believe the...
Vida.
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 Yep. Yep. So, those are the fees for services that we give out. Secondly, I would request consideration given to postponing this bylaw until we get the report that I requested back from what other communities our size do. And it would also give us an opportunity to perhaps discuss or ask feedback from organizations such as Canafest, is what impact is this gonna have on them and what they're going to give back to our community. I appreciate what is being said here, but I think that we haven't given enough thought to it at this time, and I would just like us to just maybe put the brakes on for a period of time until staffs have the opportunity to do some investigation on that and report back to council so that we can make an informed decision. I don't want to be going nature, and so I would not support this bylaw at this time if that is the direction that council wants to take.
Just a quick comment, Counselor Thompson, respect, it's only given the first three readings on May 22nd, so perhaps when we do encounter that decision meeting at that point, the 22nd, we might have that information posted.
That's a good point.
Because that is quite a lengthy timeline, and we're only in the seventh, and the 22nd is quite a ways off.
Gentlemen in the back.
Yep.
Worship, just so council's aware that, you know, if we have to do a bit more research, it may take a little longer than May 22nd, being the fact that we're likely to be working on some emergency services in a little while, so rather than staple it down to the 22nd, it could just be coming at a later date.
But in any event, the decision is only on the 22nd, so instead of taking any decisions postponed at this point in time, this is only for information. Gentlemen in the back row, and then I believe we have Counselor Butler, and then we have Counselor Tripp.
Okay. Sorry, but I was a bit distracted trying to get the live stream to work here on Facebook and some YouTube right now, so I wasn't paying too much attention, but this idea.
For the record.
Les Johnson.
Thank you.
GFTV and taxpayer. Christine Thompson, the counselor Thompson, basically went over my major point, and that is, in my 14 years of being involved with council, watching what's happening, I've seen council go through this back and forth where, oh, we want to be able to make sure that we're giving the money out to people and groups that could use it, but we don't want to end up being ogres because we don't have any money left and they weren't coming there in time. And that's what happened pretty much every year when it was Granton Aid. I'm sure that Counselor Thompson and, excuse me, our former mayor over here would be able to remember what that's like. So, you're gonna have a pot of cash, and you're gonna say, oh, all these groups, the worthy groups have to get their ass in by a certain date, and they never do. There's always somebody who's late. And when they finally come before you at the last minute, the 11th hour, and they're a really good thing, and everybody loves them in the community, and you have to tell them, there's no money left in the kitty for them, and they, but you gave it to this group over here, and they're not even half as worthy as we are compared to everybody else, and you look like ogres, or you feel like you look like ogres, and then you feel bad about it. That's why you stopped having Granton Aid primarily, besides the fact that you can't add. I've watched this process happen in council where you're trying to dole out the money, and there's a group over here adding up how much you doled out to who, and there's another group adding it, another group, and you have three totals at the end of it. I'm sure that staff always fix it, but I can understand why you want to do this, but if you haven't been on council before and haven't gone through this, talk to some people who've been on council and find out what it feels like afterwards. That's all. That's my two cents.
Mr. Bro.
Yeah, it was my understanding this was just a business charge for administration of the project and also for rehabilitation of the assets. So, I just, one question for staff is what reserve fund is this money going into? Is it going into a land reserve fund, or is it just going into general revenue? And I think we need to propose an amendment to this motion that it come back at the May 22nd regular meeting with information from, say, three cities of similar size to compare their fees and services by law. May 22nd, I mean, I could do that research myself, I can go online and look it up, I mean, we all could. We could go on three different websites, Passover Trail, and I don't know, Princeton or something, and find out what their fees and services by law. Staff doesn't need to do that, we could just bring it back on May 22nd, and all of us go do our homework and check that out, because I know staff's busy with EOC. So, we could just pass this as it is and go do our homework and then be prepared when we come back next time.
Again, the...
So, I just had a question for staff.
Yeah, but again, assuming the possibility could be there, that we could have some information for the 22nd. We're a little premature to changing the amendment now, because all it is, is recommending that we do the first three readings on the 22nd, so there is a huge timeline still, and I know staff is busy with EOC, but rather than jump the gun today, let's just wait and see on the 22nd. We can always defer it or postpone it on the 22nd.
I had a question for staff.
And, yes, and that will be directed. Mr. Gates.
The piece collected would go into general revenues.
Thank you. Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Congressman. So, then are we saying that if this motion comes back on the 22nd with the 5% gross daily revenue up to $2,000 per day, along with then some additional information from staff, that because if we're gonna be giving these first three readings today, then at that time that we would change it?
And not giving first three readings today?
No, it's just referring. Oh, referring, so referring it to the 22nd. So, on the 22nd then, we would give the first three readings if and at that point, with the additional information that we have, we would be able to change that figure at that point if that were...
Whatever, whatever council decides at that particular point in time, based on the information on the 22nd, only then a decision will be made. We are just having preliminary discussions at this point. Counselor Bro.
Yeah, just a quick one, as long as we're also including the fact that the cost or the 5% may lower, not increase. If we're looking at neighboring communities or communities the same size, and they hold events, such as Jazz event, Blues event, they're doing a meet people joust in a souls, and a lot of those are on city properties, and a bunch of them, the city doesn't charge anything for them, they're just happy to have the revenue coming into the community. So, when we do a research, if we find that, then maybe the $2,000 disappears as well, and maybe we decide just to do it for free.
Exactly, and that's exactly what I stated again, because this preliminary discussion gives us the opportunity, so to speak. We have a bone to chew on right now, and we can check it out if it council wishes to do so, and everybody can put their heads together on the 22nd. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Just a question or comment, I guess. The temporary commercial use of 5% of gross daily revenue up to $2,000 a day, who's gonna determine what the gross daily revenue is? Because, for instance, Canafest, they pre-sell their whole raft of tickets, so do we charge them on that? Do we charge them only on what they bring in a day? You know, there's just too many issues for me at this time to even want to refer it until we've got better information. I just can't, I'm sorry, I cannot support this as it is.
Again, Counselor Thompson, we're not referring it today, we're only requesting council to allow it to appear on the 22nd for a decision, so at that particular point in time, if council is not prepared for any which reason, we can either refer it back to staff, or we can postpone it. I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here because of the determination also what the revenue per day is. This could be also done after the event is over. That's just one option, because we don't need to go there when they're at the door and say, okay, you made so much a day. All those, the documentation can be assessed, and then the charges can be put. There's so many ways, am I correct, Mr. Gates? I mean, this is not, this is, we're basically, by the way it looks, we're new with this now, so I think we're getting ahead of ourselves here. Counselor Hamer.
And I think we're missing sight of the point why, I think this bylaw was probably introduced in the first place, is that we have businesses right now conducting business with or without business licenses on city property. And I think this is what the city's trying to address. It's not necessarily the events that are coming in, it's the day-to-day business that's going on right now on city land with businesses that are not, some of them have business licenses, others don't, I guess, most of them don't, that are running commercial businesses on city property. So, I'd be approved, I would vote for this now and bring it back on the 22nd, and then take a look and see what's going on there.
Again, we're not voting on this now, we're voting to send it to the 22nd.
Send it, yes.
So, the wording...
That's what I would vote on, send it to the 22nd.
I think we're just, we're trying to get a handle on this for the corporation, as you see.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question now. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Thompson's opposed.
Just for interest sake, it costs you $1,500 to hold a circus and trail.
That is just the clown thing.
Just the first performance of the...
Okay, so clown is there.
Is that with Martin or with Sam?
If you don't bring the clown.
Moving on.
Yes.
We will now move on to item six, which we shelve to later timelines in presentations from staff.
I heard several individuals to show up for items...
Which ones, sorry?
Six A and C and D, so...
Yeah, move on to one to be counted.
Yeah, so you could address six B next, and we have to do the highlights, and then, sorry, we have to do a bit of a juggling here, so.
Okay, so we'll do the two-step. Item 6B, subject matter, James Donaldson Park, accessibility upgrades for development engineering services.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to recuse myself.
Oh, go ahead.
Why? Because I'm on the organizing committee for the GFI.
Thank you, Counselor Hamer. Okay, the recommendation is the committee of the whole recommends to council to approve the Grand Forks International Baseball Tournament Organization Committee, GFI, undertaking accessibility improvements to James Donaldson Park at the May 7 regular meetings. We want to break these into two, I think we'll break them into...
You can choose.
It's all going to the regular meeting in any event, so we could do it in one, yeah. So, in further, that the committee of the whole recommends to council to approve the in-kind contributions of labor and materials necessary for the completion of the project to a maximum contribution of blank dollars at the May 7 regular meeting. Counselor Butler.
I'll move that, but with a question to our manager of operations as to what he feels would be...
Please proceed. It's from development engineering, the manager of development engineering.
In your worship, the manager of operations, so he does have a bit of a number, but...
Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Here you go, Mr. Mayor. So, with this project, we're looking at combining a few things, so it would be moving the entrance gates kind of towards the washroom and away from the corner area. So, once we have an exact location, we'll know the exact amount, but I think that basically there's gonna be some stricter work that might need to be done, and there's some buried cables in the ground there, so I think $4,000 would be a safe number for that work.
Yes, I'll move that with $4,000.
Any discussion, Counselor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Congressman. Yes, Andy, and you as well, and your feeling that that would be something that the city can take on quite comfortably? Resource-wise? I'm asking that question.
I think we can allocate some manpower or HR resources there to get that done.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Still, Carrie, again, bearing in mind that this is rather a decision. We're deciding.
Can I play highlight with questions?
Great. Great, thanks. Actually, you could have presented the remote decision, maybe.
I think I should, you can invite the specialist, you know.
All right. Okay, moving on to item 6E, because our presenters are here. Subject matter is Urban Systems Limited.
We can put up six sitting down to the regular.
So, we're able to resume 6A. Subject matter memo, floodplain mapping risk assessment from development engineering services. Recommendations the committee of the whole receives for information, the memorandum from development engineering services regarding floodplain mapping risk assessment. Move it, please. Counselor Bro.
Go ahead.
Worship, thank you, just won't be, just waiting for Scott team to get it, I'll just briefly provide the recap. Currently, lending time, and we're doing the floodplain mapping kickoff this afternoon, and in the midst of an EOC level two as well. So, in terms of the funding, we applied for two grants, the Gas Cap Strategic Priorities Fund, and we need to, we see this values, me, emergency preparedness fund, and contributed as well, $5,000, that was part of our long-term engineering cap planning budget, and we're relating to structural flood protection. So, with all those grants successful, we aligned the basically components of the project, and Scott Shepherd will be providing a little short review here, so. Come on up.
Okay.
Yeah. We've got it up on the screen.
Good morning, Mr. Shepherd. Morning, thank you for having me here today.
So, the head's with this, take a look at it.
Sure.
Perhaps you could have a brief interview?
Sure.
And we'll be right back.
Yeah, so, I'm Scott Shepherd with Urban Systems, I've been working with the city for a number of years on lots of different projects. I've been working with the city for a number of years on lots of different projects and presenting on a couple here today. And then also with me is Peter Giavati, Senior Water Engineer, who is going to present on the sewer phasing plan when we get to that one of the agenda. Trying to find my glasses. I was going out. I can do it.
We've got some of them.
We all have them.
I know. Once you hit that age.
Sign or trade.
Okay, so as Graham mentioned, let's do a quick overview of our team and the project and the work plan and stuff. Just Graham, jump in if I miss anything that you guys want to do, so. So some of the photos that I throw in here are obviously some of the ones from last year, so you'll recognize some of those, and probably could have taken some today. It's starting to look almost similar out there for sure. So the city receives a fair amount of funding to work on this project, so we've got some funding through Strategic Priorities Fund, which is gas cap, and $225,000 there. We also received some money through UVCF on the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund, so there's another $67,500 there. And then last year, the city had planned on doing some work on floodplain mapping, but these two grant programs are coming up, so staff decided to take a pause and wait to see how the grants funding played out, so you could pool all the money together and do a much larger, deeper project. So again, some of the key goals of this are you want to assess the flood risk, including climate change, will prepare some flood mapping, and develop those mitigation plans in the high-risk areas. So the last study was done in 1991, so now there's like 25 years worth of data since then, and of course, we've got climate changing that needs to be accounted for. So in 1991, I just looked Friday before I was putting this together, the 200-year peak flood event in the Grandby was listed at 385 cubic meters a second, and last year, the Grandby almost reached that level. So, you know, 100 and 200 year, it was almost reached last year, and it looks like we're heading that way again this year with similar or higher levels than last year. So, you know, things are changing, so it's timely that you guys are working on these plans and figuring out solutions to try and prevent some risk areas from being flooded in the future. Again, those key goals, we're going to use the APEC BC legislative flood requirements for the design. So our team are well-versed in that, they've done a number of these plans around BC, including lots in Western Canada, and right now currently working on one in Texas as well. So Cameron Gady is going to be our lead engineer on this, and he'll be, he's actually on his way out here this afternoon to kick off the project with staff, along with Brendan, who's a hydraulic modeler and a GIS specialist, so he does a lot of the modeling work in a software called Hecras. So he'll be doing a lot of that work, and then we've got some other experts in terms of analysis, climate change, communications, as well as, I'll be involved a little bit just to make sure there's consistency across other plans that you've got on the go, and just making sure the full communication is working well as well. So again, some of the key activities that we are going to do, so today's the kickoff meeting this afternoon, so this project startup, and there's lots of data to gather, so over the last 25 years, there's lots of different sources, I'm sure Graham could list them all off for you right now, but there's lots of those to gather, put together, needs to be compiled. You're in a good spot here, that you have actually more data than most other people, because you've got Washington State data as well that we can reference. We're also going to be doing a topographic river survey and a LiDAR survey, get that updated as well as part of the project, so. And with the LiDAR, I believe the city's going to partner up with the regional district, who are doing one as well, so there'll be some economies of scale there by partnering up with them to do that. We're also going to do a fair amount of communications and engagement with the public on this project, so we're going to use the IAP2 strategies and such to do our informing the public and consulting on some of the stages of the project. So again, that might look, you know, engaging the public on, you know, identifying some of the hazards that they've seen, maybe getting some input on solutions. And then we're also going to include lots of other local agencies as well, so maybe some other clubs and organizations and key community members. And then, of course, we'll be doing a fair amount of computer modeling and using that to put together a risk assessment, using all that information we've got from the public, the surveys, what the model is saying, and then through that, we'll be able to have a better understanding of all the hazards and risks, which then can be used to help inform where you're going to put new development, maybe come up with some cost-effective solutions for mitigation, figure out what some of those impacts to your hard infrastructure are. And then the city also had used, or had done a municipal natural capital asset plan last year, so we're going to use some of the learnings from that into preparing some of the solutions in this project here. So again, that mitigation planning and reporting piece, they'll have a plan and some budgets there, you know, you end up with, somebody may be familiar with like a risk register of all the different areas, some updated floodplain mapping, and then from that, you know, staff can integrate those things into your long-term capital plan. And again, one of the tasks at the end will be to take those as well, to look at some of your bylaws and your policies and stuff, to see if updates are needed in any of those So schedule-wise, we're starting today, you can see on the timeline there, so project startup today, we'll be collecting data over the next little while, we're looking to have maybe a community engagement session late June-ish, but we'll figure that out this afternoon with staff when the ideal time to do that is with everybody. The survey in the river, we want to do when the water is a little bit lower than it is today, so that'll happen probably mid-August. And then from there, we'll be looking and doing all the analysis from September through to December, draft up that risk assessment, close consultation with staff, come up with some mitigation and cost plans, and then engage the public again after that, and, you know, see if, get some of their input on the solutions, and make those changes, report back to the staff, and then do a final presentation to counsel maybe next April or so, depending on how things move along with the weather and when we can get at certain things like surveying the river. So, that was it, just a quick overview on that, so if you've got any questions.
Counselor Abbott.
Thanks for that, Scott. I'm just curious, so if we're going to have the report back to us and finalized next April of 19, that means that no mitigation work will have been done, so we could go tech, we could basically go through two more flood seasons before any actual work is done, is that correct?
Through your worship, I believe we will have a lot of the work done by December, so there could be some opportunities to do some of the mitigation in there, but a lot of the solutions that we're anticipating are actually going to be fairly significant, so they may require grant funding, so we want to be in a good position to, we have a good application prepared for those types of things, get some funding in place for that, so I guess that's a good agenda item for this afternoon, we can talk this down to about, you know, is there maybe some solutions that we can tackle next year through your existing budgeting process?
And you, Counselor Trump?
Thank you, Mayor Klein. Yeah, I was talking to somebody yesterday, and they were mentioning that down in the States, they use, they fill very large tubes with water, and they put them up against the side of the river, and that apparently is very effective in keeping the areas from flooding. Then, once the water goes down, it just drain, I don't know if you know of that technology, apparently that's a lot, would be a lot cheaper than, you know, banking.
Yep, thank you for your question. Actually, we do use a fair amount of those in Kelowna, you may have seen on the news, they call them these, they're big orange aqua dams, so last year, they had them along the beach for open water lake flooding. This year, they've been lining mill holes through Kelowna with those as well, and they are very, very cost-effective, so that could be something that you, as we come up with the mitigation plan, is, okay, maybe let's look to purchase some of those, and we have those in place with public works, we're going to be able to assemble those quite easily.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie? And you again. Okay, moving on to item six C. Subject matter, sewer phasing plan, draft report from Development Engineering Service. Recommendation, committee at the whole receives the report on the sewer phasing plan, and further, that the committee at the whole recommends to counsel to adopt sewer phasing plan report at the May 7, 2018 regular meeting. Over, please, Counselor Thompson.
Sure. I'll kick it off here. Go ahead, Mr. Walker. So likewise, we applied for a number of grants last year, and we're also successful. As part of the discussion about the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, we wanted to look at the overall health of the aquifer in relation to sound systems, and look at areas of potential future expansion, what considerations should be addressed in there. So the timing was perfect that we had, I don't know if you remembered last name right, but Peter G., who had led a really interesting study here, and engaged in excellent work.
Go ahead. Good ask, you.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
Okay, is that, how's that?
That's much better.
I believe this initiative arose out of a concern for groundwater quality throughout the area, and the fact that septic tanks and pipelines could be having, happening on groundwater. There's quite a few areas outside the city boundary that use septic tanks and pipelines, and, but there's also some areas at the end of this community sewer system inside the city boundary, still using septic tanks and pipelines. And so that's the areas that we wanted to address. For the purpose of the study, you can see that the area with the red lines, that's the city sewer system, and then the area between those lines and the city boundary is, are the areas that we're concerned about. For the purpose of the study, we named them as a number of neighborhoods, and they've all got distinct colors just for the, for the sake of it. One of them is, or they'll list those, Highway 3 East End colored in blue, the Public Works and Richmond Avenue Industrial in yellow, the Airport Industrial in orange, South Rockles in purple, Johnson Flats has a light green color, Southwest Nine Forks in brown, and Donaldson Northwest Area in green. And then there's a number of various small parcels scattered throughout the area that are colored in red. So one of the first activities was to try and characterize these neighborhoods, and we did it by saying, what is the area of the neighborhood? What are the number of parcels from each one? What are the number of developed and undeveloped parcels? And what is the current zoning? So that led to this table here, I'm not going to go through each one in detail, but that's, that basically kind of forms the character of each of those neighborhoods and the kind of blank use that's currently happening.
My final question, just for clarification. The number of parcels, are those lots?
Yeah. Whatever has been subdivided into lots, some of them are very large, some of them is.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to be sure.
The next table is the projection of potential parcels without sewer system. In other words, what sort of subdivision can you do to get more parcels within each of those neighborhoods? And the minimum parcel size without community sewer is 1 hectare, a maximum of 100. So then, if you take, if you take the areas available and the minimum parcel size for 1 hectare, you get the number of potential parcels. Then, you can also calculate the potential parcels with community sewer, and the minimum parcel size is 0.14 hectare if there's community sewer, that's a third of an acre. And so the last column, you can see that where there's some areas with very large parcels that could be subdivided into those numbers on the last column. So the exercise then comes, how do you, how do you kind of assess these in terms of whether they need sewer or whether they don't need sewer? And so we adopted two parallel examining issues. One is to develop a risk template for continuation of onsite assistance. That risk template was developed by older associates who are sort of geological, hydrogeological experts, and they basically went through and developed a list of parameters that would represent the risk from using onsite septic tanks and pipelines, and we're going to be getting to that, to that list in another slide. The other is to develop a cost template of what would it cost to retrofit sewer in these areas that don't have it, and what that might look like for property owners. So basically, those two parallel activities went forward, and we've got a draft report now that basically highlights the results of those examinations. This is a summary of the existing and potential sewer areas, it shows you where the city sewer currently leaves off and where these neighborhoods are in relation to that. In terms of developing what it would cost, we went through and did an inventory or quantity takeoff, or what it would take to put in sewers on existing roads, and restore the roads, put in the service line up to the property, and these costs on the column that says services, include the service line up to the property line with a marker for the owner to connect to, but they don't include sewer that the owner would have to build from the property line to the house or to the building. That's typically done at their own, at their own cost, because usually a general contractor doesn't want to go and work on private property. So here's a summary of what each one of those neighborhoods would require in terms of length of gravity sewer, number of manholes, length of the force main, and the number of services, pump stations, and any specials such as a river or rail crossing or highway crossing. At the end of the report, there's a table of unit, unit cost to be applying to those quantities, and that's the way to sort of end up with a cost per neighborhood. The assignment of risk ratings, or the various parameters that Goldr Associates chose, as follows. There's five of them. One is the soil type, whether it's a well-draining granular, which, and the lowest risk is risk one. So well-draining granular material would be a risk one, but till or clay material that doesn't, doesn't gramma well, would be a risk four, and that's the, that's the highest level of risk. The other parameter is the depth to groundwater, and what they used was if it was, if the depth was greater than 10 meters. And what they used was if it was, if the depth was greater than 10 meters, it had a risk one. If it was less than one meter, it had a risk four. And then you're into risk three, two and three on, on any depths in between 10 and one meter. So obviously, the, the, the ones, the riskiest areas are where the water table is less than one meter. That's, that's to be taken with a grain of salt because that depth in the water table obviously changes seasonally. And so at this time of year, the water table might be right up there. But what they did was they took the, sort of the worst case event where the water table would be close to the surface. Then the third one is the slope of the land. The tighter the slope, the lower the risk. So zero to five percent gradient would be risk one. And very steep slopes like 30, over 30% would be a risk four. There actually isn't anything over 30%. And then all the ones in between. The next parameter was the parcel size. So large parcels were, were afforded a low risk level, risk one, and small parcels went to a risk, a risk four. So if you've got a third meter or more, you've got areas that are high risk. And then the fifth parameter was setbacks from either surface water courses like creeks or, or wells that are used either individually or musically. So a risk one would be the area is outside the capture zone of a, of a well or a creek. And, and a high risk of four would be inside the capture zone of a well or creek. So then they, they, they did a mapping of the whole area for each of these parameters. There's dozens of those maps because there's one for every parameter and, and risk level. So this one presents a summary or an averaging out of the risk factors for each of those neighborhoods. And so the, the green is, is a risk, is an average risk one. Yellow is an average risk two. Orange is an average risk three. And there's a little bit of red there that are average risk four. These assignments of, of, of points for risks are, are not, are not weighted. In other words, each of those five parameters is considered of equal importance. However, you can get into a little more detail by assigning an importance ranking to each of those parameters. For example, if, if your big concern is the groundwater, then you might want to sort of assign that parameter a greater importance than, say, the lot size. And, and so you would then multiply those risks by the importance factor. We haven't done the importance factor because that's really kind of up to you and staff to say, yeah, we, what we're really concerned about is, say, groundwater. And so that one might have a multiplier of, of three while others might have a multiplier of one. So you, you would then rework this map in, in, in terms of, of importance. You're nodding and you're not nodding.
Oh, yeah, we're getting it.
Yeah, you're okay. And so this, this table sets out the overall average risk factor without any importance for each of the neighborhoods, the area in each of the neighborhoods, the parcels, the existing parcels, either developed or undeveloped, and the capital cost estimates of retrofitting community sewer and tying it into the city sewer system. There's no, there's no provision at this point for any expansion that might be required at the wastewater treatment plant. And that's largely because you're undergoing an upgrade and an increasing capacity for the plant now, which would, which would cover off any additional flow that came from these areas. So I guess, I guess in a longer term horizon, we could add that in, like what is the, what is the cost of expanding the plant? One more time. And then for, just for rough comparison, we took the cost and divided by the number of hectares that, that would be served. And that's the last column. And you can see that there's, there's quite a range there. If, if there's a, if the neighborhood is relatively small and it costs a lot to service it, like Highway 3 East End, it's not a huge area, but in, in order to get it anywhere, you'd have to go across the river. And so there's, there's a high cost per hectare associated with, with that one. And all the way down to 35,000 per hectare in the Donaldson Northwest area. So there you have it. We didn't formulate any hard conclusions and recommendations pending the staff's view and your comments on things like the, the importance rating. And, and in terms of developing a, you know, like a five-year plan to see which neighborhoods might want to be addressed first, what sort of communication plan with, with the property owners that you might want to do, we, we've left that pending, pending this, this special C. How, how that, how that turns out. The risk factors that were found by Goldr's work are not, are not high, so it's not like the world's going to come to an end here pretty quick. But there are some areas that are riskier than others and, and maybe some areas that are, are more, are ready here for, for higher densities. We also sent out a, a questionnaire to the property owners in all of those neighborhoods. We got, uh, what's the response? Thirty-nine responses. And very few indicated that they were having any serious problems.
I wouldn't respond if I was.
Well, there's, there's that factor. A, a few of them said, yes, they, they have, at times experienced spongy ground where their field is and, and some septic orders. But by and large, it wasn't, it wasn't anybody sort of saying, I'm going to panic. I need sewer now. So there you have it. Any questions? Oh, I don't, I don't have a slide that says questions.
That's okay. We get it. Do you mind just, because I have to... Thanks for your presentation. It's exactly what we need moving forward. It's very clear and will help us make decisions. Just a couple of questions that I noticed when I was reading through it. One, there was a mention that one of the river crossings on the Granby River was corroding and might be in need of repair. So I'm thinking maybe money spent on replacing the existing sewer first before we expand. And so I'm just wondering the state of that pipe. And also on your first map, I noticed that the subdivision at the end of Riverside is outside city limits. I wasn't aware of that. Is that true or is that... So those new, that new development, the sewer system is there, but it's not within city limits?
Yeah, I agree with us. Oh, sorry. And I agree that's correct.
So they're still, they haven't been incorporated?
No, they are.
Oh, they are? Oh, it's just not that. Okay.
Oh, they have, they have been brought in.
Okay. And the pipe crossing the Granby?
The, the condition of the pipe, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
The condition of the pipe is, is not very well known, but it's suspected that it's, that it is such that it probably wants replacement. And I agree with you that, that should be looked at.
Actually, last year, Mr. Reed and I had a structural inquiry to look at the crossing as well. So, and I can recall what was in the report, but there is, the city does have a report there. Through you, Mr. Merritt. We're currently working on replacing it, so it does have a pipe across the bridge, a new pipe, and we're just connecting footends.
Oh, you're looking on it? It's in our capital plan, is it?
The concern with it was, with pressure, if something was to, or root mass or something, made contact with that bridge. The, the old pipe that was on there is fairly brittle and would be an issue for sure. So we've done a single pipe across the bridge with some flexible connections so that it could take some movement if it was contacted or the bridge was contacted.
That's the old bridge?
Sorry, no, that's...
The Plating Bridge.
No, it's the, it's one between Riverside Drive and it's just down from the old bridge. It's a footbridge.
That's perfect. Yeah, if we can, the, the slide that showed the risks and the neighborhoods that were all... And, and, yeah, perfect. They've got the two there, risk one and risk two. How come they're all spotted in amongst them? Like, wouldn't that whole area be one instead of two different tests?
Yeah, they, they get, they get very detailed and, and they basically look at the, at the soils and groundwater in, in that area. So the parts, parts of the area that are closer to the river have higher groundwater, so they're kind of dated, a little riskier. And then as you step back from the river, there's lower groundwater. So it's, but what this is, what this is to represent is the sort of the overall average risk. I, I think what I mentioned before about assigning a weight or importance factor to each of these is probably a good thing to do because it might, it might bring it into more focus as to, you know, what...
So, so based on the soil conditions, that's what determines the gravity of the situation in those areas because of the different colors?
Right.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Just in, in further, Peter mentioned a couple of the further steps that we'd need before we go into the capital planning or the OCP stage. And that's why it's kind of outside the scope of this study, but pending the results of the flood planning and also looking at the agricultural land reserve, food system area. You know, the question of expanding sewer into areas that have different risks is a much larger question. And we could take the soil conditions, the groundwater issues as one of the scientific pieces going into that larger planning discussion. So that's part of the OCP overhaul is to incorporate this and those other pieces of information as we go ahead.
Which would then, of course, show up more exact cost and also...
Exactly.
Thank you. Councilor Kip.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Yeah, and that, that sort of addresses the, the questions that I was having around the major assumption of the report seeming to be that it was based on groundwater contamination. And I think that what we've learned here is that there are a lot of other factors involved that should and, and could be considered. I was especially interested in hearing what would happen if sewer were to come into areas in terms of decreasing the lot size and then making that land available for potential housing because, of course, we've got a bit of an issue here in, in the community. But just asking a question about that, we, we, it seems we don't have a lot of properties that are sort of in that number three risk area. And we do have a lot of properties that would probably be putting nitrates, phosphorus, all kinds of things that are outside of city limits. Could you give any kind of an estimate or a weight as to how, how, you know, how debilitating is that for the groundwater system?
Right? Yeah? These onsite ground disposal systems, they use, they basically use the soil as, as the, as the remedy. And, and the soil does remove nitrates and phosphates from, from the sewage. To, to a point, after, after many years, it tends to become saturated. And so depending on how long that is, it will eventually infiltrate into the groundwater. And, and, you know, the Fraser Valley has, has a, has a serious problem with each year they measure nitrates in their groundwater supply, and each year it goes up.
But is that more from farming or is it from...
Yeah, that's not only from, from septic tanks, but it's also from dairy farms and some, you know, fertilizers or, or like, but, but the septic tanks and, and top fields are, are part of that equation.
10%? 5%? 2%?
Yeah.
40%?
I, in the, in the Okanagan, back in 1975, they did a, a full inventory of all of the phosphorus sources that ended up in, in Okanagan Lake. And that sort of kind of led to their neutral removal drinking plant, which is now sort of well-known throughout, throughout the world. But it was, phosphorus was the deciding factor that was creating growth of algae and, and all kinds of other stuff in, in, in Okanagan Lake. So in terms of that groundwater quality, you know, part of your, if you develop a fiber plant, should be more closely monitor what's going on with nitrates in the groundwater in, in specific areas. So you, so that you, if, if you make decisions, you know, they're, they're informed by what you've, what you've observed.
Just if I could just ask one more question though, because we, because we are, you know, surrounded by rural areas where farming and using, you know, they use fertilizers on the field and that kind of thing. Is, I mean, all of that's going into the river too. How do you think that we would ever be able to really gauge what the city infrastructure is, of, you know, these septic tanks are, are contributing?
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's, that's, you're, you're bang on. And that's precisely why Goldr included the, the setback parameter and the, the capture zone. So while you may be farming and applying fertilizer in one area, it, it may be moving in a different, in a different direction than, than the capture zone that's of concern for. And, and largely you'd be worried about your drinking water supply, which is all wells.
Thank you.
Mr. Bubba.
Yeah, I have looked at previous studies that have been done of our groundwater and the high nitrate concentrations don't occur in all of the valley. And those studies that were done, it was up against the South Mountain there, the Lea Mountain, and also down in the nursery area, which is pretty obvious where those nitrates are coming from. It is coming from intensive farming practices. And at the points when those studies were done, we didn't have issues with nitrates in our wells here. I don't know how that's changed over the years. I know that our staff monitors our wells continually and I imagine we test for nitrates. And it would be interesting to see now as well, since we have the farm over on Northport Road there, right by one of our wells, if we are starting to get nitrates in there or not.
So basically, as you stated, the ground filtration, as I know it, it's all dependent also on the veins and the ground because wells pick up water sources from different veins and they're constantly changing. So based on that, depending on the ground condition, i.e. the filtration effectiveness, until that filtration is contaminated, at which point the risk becomes higher.
Thank you. And, and that's, that's the other parameters, the depth, or like, the more soil that goes through before it hits the water table?
Absolutely. It's like putting three coffee filters in.
Councilor Thompson.
Thank you. Just a couple of things.
Farmland, that you were referring to, Council, that was a potato farm for years and years and years, like Suzy Supermoto. The other thing was, in the late 1980s, early 90s, late Pastor Jemias, who was then the Director of the Region District, recall him coming in and telling the city clerk at that time that there was a nitrate plume that was coming from the Carson Road area towards our city, and, I don't know, can you comment on that, or have you been made aware of that, or...
Yeah, I don't know about this particular, but I know that nitrates do travel in, in these, as you say, largely because of what I was saying before, that when, when an area kind of reaches saturation of nitrates in the soil, it then starts to reheat it and moves on down with the movement of the groundwater.
Do we have any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right, moving on to 6D subject matter, again, from Urban Systems Limited. The delegation on the SSAT, which is the Service Sustainability Assessment Tool from Corporate Services and Administration. The recommendation is that council recommends, committed to all recommends that council receive the information as provided by Urban Systems Limited and refers the matter to the May 7, 2018 regular meeting for consideration to adopt the Service Sustainability Assessment Tool as a reporting tool for use towards determining the city's performance measures. Move her, please. Councilor Thompson. Discussion, go ahead. Go ahead, Mrs. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you may recall, I was out here a little while ago, and we had done a brief introduction on the tool and ran through some of the details of it, so this is just the final presentation on the tool, and staff have since filled out all the information in there, so we'll present those results of what the tool outputs are on here, but I will rehash some of the old slides that you've seen before, just for public record. So, Mr. Watt had indicated earlier that the city had received a lot of grants last year and the year before, so this was one of those grants, again, received through the Strategic Priorities Fund. The city also partnered with a few other organizations and municipalities, put together a tool to help measure performance. So again, sustainable service delivery is one of the foundations of the city's asset management plan and endorse asset management within BC through the province and UVCN. So again, what is sustainable service delivery? The definition from the BC framework for asset management defines it as, a service is sustainable if it is possible for the community to meet its present needs without compromising the needs of the community's ability to meet the future needs. So again, that's been the foundation of how we've created this tool, looking at, when you're measuring and reporting on how well you're providing services, is how well you're doing today and how well you're doing in the future. So that's been the foundation, guiding principle of the tool. So, a little bit about the project. Again, it was initiated by the city. It's one of the key goals of your asset management plan, but there was no way for the city to find a simple, intuitive, easy way to measure how well you're performing on delivering your services. So there was definitely a desire there by the city to develop some sort of tool, and of course, you received that funding and volunteered with a number of other cohort communities, part of a pilot project that was sponsored by UVCN and the province of BC. You may recall the last session that we had done, I mentioned that the city and urban systems had applied to the Association of Consulting Engineers of Canada, BC, for an award of merit in the engineering excellence category, so the city and urban systems were successful on that, and I've got a copy of your plaque here today, so I'll hand over today at the end of the meeting. So that's good news, and there's been some press releases done on that over the last month or so. So what are we seeing when we're talking about sustainability of services? Again, we want to meet these three criteria, meet the needs of those who receive it, protect your natural assets and don't degrade the environment, and make sure it's financially viable and stable over time. So you're covering those three pillars of service, environment, and finances. So I mentioned some cohort communities that the city had partnered with to develop the tool, so we worked with the District of Central, Sadich, Salmo, Squamish, Clearwire, Roslyn, and Sadich to run through the tool and test it out, because we wanted to find something that was simple and intuitive that everyone could use, and it could also be scalable to other sized communities. So, Grant Forks being, you know, roughly 4,200 people, you know, you want to be able to use that here, also the community of, say, 900, or a community of 18,000 to 20,000 as well. We also partnered with numerous industry stakeholders, so not only was it UVCN and the province of BC, we've listed a whole bunch of other organizations here, so we had a couple of sessions with these groups, and we've made presentations for them since, and consulted with them all the way through the process and the development of the tool. Recently, FCM has decided to use that tool as part of its asset management strategy and long-term planning tools that they're going to be putting out, so you may see some more references to this tool out in the industry as well. So again, some of the objectives of the project, we wanted to evaluate how well you're delivering services. It's also going to be used to support communication with target audiences, so staff can communicate with council, council can communicate with the community, and then, you know, you've got some tools and some visuals to be able to share out, so everyone has a good understanding of how well you're performing today and in the future. And then again, one of the goals was to make this a resource for other communities, so the tool is posted on the Asset Management BC website for other communities to use as well. So, yeah. Again, it's a simple tool developed using Microsoft Excel, so most, most communities and staff know how to use Excel, so we wanted to find something that was common to everybody. There are lots of other different software platforms out there that you can use that you may see if you go to the City Edmonton or Calgary website, where you've got these interactive websites and stuff that you can use, but those are very costly. Small communities can't be affording the annual fee to be running those things, and the staff time to input the data, so they're very data hungry and require, you know, full-time staff to be able to keep those up to date, so. Tried to look at eight core service areas that were common to most communities in BC, those are listed up here. Again, we want to be scalable to any size or stage of community, and then be able to track your progress over time, so not only does it show you how well you did in 2017, you save that, and then when you fill out in 2018, you can look back and see, okay, are we making progress in the areas we wanted to? So again, that tool will help you communicate with the public, with council, with each other, help prepare the, your annual reports, identify where services are doing well, identify where sustainability of service may be at risk, and then from there, you can develop maybe some plans or strategies to help improve your service provision. So you may find some area in the wastewater service, you know, was underperforming, and you know, maybe we need to do a certain plan or capital project to be able to move the dial from, you know, a certain point and turn that up, so you are a little bit more sustainable. And again, you can track your progress over time. So there's three key areas within the current performance and how well you're prepared for the future, areas that we are measuring, so we're looking to measure how well services are being delivered, what are they, how are you doing, what's the quality, the quantity. Governance area, which we reviewed at a previous meeting, you know, how are your decisions being made, is the public being consulted, are you engaging other regional stakeholders if needed to be? And then on the finance side, you know, are you sustainable, long-term, is your funding sufficient now and in the future? So what does the tool look like? Again, it's just an MS Excel page, comes with a three-page user guide, so anyone who downloads the Excel off the Asset Management BC website also has a PDF user guide that helps you walk through how and where to fill in. So each service of those eight service areas has its own tab within Excel, and within there, you can fill out your different current performance scores and your preparedness for the future. So we modeled this tool after the Asset Smart Tool, which is very similar, where you self-assess yourself on a scale of zero to four. So again, so the tools are very similar on that same website, so communities are familiar with how to do one, they can easily jump over to this one as well. So again, here's an example out of the water quality section in there, so you can see in Excel, we'll ask you to rank yourself on a score of zero to three, how well your water quality is doing there, so, you know, it should take staff who are familiar with the service area about 15 minutes to run through this tool, so it's not too time-consuming at all, and at the end, you know, you'll be able to get a graphic to combine all these scores together, and you can see how well you're doing. So here's some of those graphics, so again, all the results can be rolled up into one overall sustainability score, so we've made it look like a speedometer, so you can see if you're in the green, orange, or the red, depending on how well you're doing, and then there's a trend line. When we get to the actual city results in the next couple of slides here, the trend line's flat, because we've just done 2017 data, so we were just in the first year of that, so next year, when staff present it, you'll have a trend line in there when you go from 2017 to 18. Again, if you're interested in looking deeper, you could go into, okay, how well are we doing in a service area currently and in the future? So that's that dashboard number two, and then dashboard three, you could dive right down into the graphics to see, okay, in our finance area, we're scoring this on current performance, and then maybe higher on how well you're prepared for the future. So, since our last meeting, staff have spent some time filling in the results here, and have put together some of these graphics we've got here. So I haven't had a good chance to look at these yet, we just finished late Friday afternoon, so we can see the summary of the results here on the water side of things, things are just trending above the 50% mark, the wastewater, very similar score there, a little bit lower on the drainage and flood protection, so there might be some room for improvement there, so that's one where you may actually want to take a look in there and see what's going on. Maybe it's, you know, prepared for the future, so it's bringing your score down, so again, you look in there and figure out what are some strategies to dive into your capital planning and operations for the coming years and try and improve there. And again, lots of the other services seem to be just above the 50% mark, fire seems to be quite a bit higher, and then solid waste is, some of these services are regional in nature, so this one here, you're actually partnered up with the regional district on solid waste, so there was only a couple of questions in there that apply directly to the city, so most of them are not applicable because they're out of your control, as the regional district does govern that service, so these were just ones where we had scored on the city there, so you're just under halfway on those. So again, here's a breakdown of those results, so you can see on the current performance score and then the preparedness for the future, so you can see on the drainage side of things, where you're, you know, at 26 currently and at 27 in the future, so that's definitely probably an area of concern and where you would probably want to spend some time trying to figure out what needs to be done and what's missing, so that you're delivering the service sustainably today and in the future. And then the other level graphics here just breaks that down even more, so if we go back to that drainage one here, you can see on the service delivery side, you know, you've got 33% and 38% on how well you're delivering the service today and in the future, and then we can see in the finance side of things, you've scored 0% today and in the future, so, which is actually not surprising, because most communities do combine their drainage and flood protection monies in the capital lump, pretty much lump it in with your general fund and your road, so a lot of time it gets sucked into other areas, and there isn't a lot of focus on funding drainage and flood protection, so that may be something definitely worth looking as part of our planning work this year through the floodplain risk hazard assessment that we're working on, so definitely one thing to pay attention to there. So what's next? You'll see some of these graphics coming forward in your annual reports from staff, so they plan to use those in there, so we can communicate how well the service is delivering, and then again, develop some strategies and plans to improve service delivery, so you may see some references in your capital budgeting in the fall around certain areas that are focusing on, and then from there, you know, you can update your capital plan to try and improve service delivery. That's it, and I don't have any questions, so I'm...
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none?
Yes, so it seems like staff's gone through all the areas now, council's done a couple of areas, I'm just wondering if there's plans from staff or councils to go through the rest of these areas as well?
What? Through you, Mayor. Thank you, yes, so staff, basically, we had a short workshop with council to look at how the tool worked and evaluated a couple of areas, and, you know, given the time constraints, we took a stab at the governance questions ourselves, I definitely want to go through with council, and so we'll be working with CEO and Mayor on the next steps on that.
Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 6D subject matter, monthly highlight reports from our department managers, recommendations, council received a monthly highlight report from department manager. Council Thompson. Council Bother.
Yeah, I've got a few questions. I don't see our fire chief here, I imagine he's down at the EOC, so we'll forego that question. I had a read for our bylaw officer, there, he mentioned in his report a Caromius case where I believe the city is looking at a temporary use permit on crown land to be able to enforce occupation on those lands. If he could just speak a bit to that. And so the traffic regulation bylaw has been causing concern, so I just wanted to know about that, and also, when he expects the pond broker bylaw will be ready for council review.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning. Through you, Mr. Mayor. With the Caromius case, they have applied for the block and the superment on the crown lands, which is the riverbanks of Caromius. I don't know where that status is now. It was brought to my attention by my boss, David Bruce, we're waiting to see what happens with that. If they are successful, as they have been in Victoria upon the George area, then we would possibly look at doing that here, which allows us to expand our bylaw services to the crown land, such as across on Riverside Drive.
Any other questions?
Traffic regulation bylaw, you said, is causing issues.
Oh, no, I completely forgot what it was.
Okay. You can tell me later, the pond... The pond broker bylaw.
The pond broker bylaw, I would ask Mr. Drexler to answer that, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the pond brokers bylaws, by now with corporate, so we're going through it from doing some fine tuning on it on that, and we are also planning on sending it into legal counsel because the bylaw, or similar bylaws, have been challenged in other municipalities in the past, and there was some verdicts that were handed down in terms of how the bylaw needs to be started, so even though we're implementing those changes already that were requested by, like, the courts, we're still in the process of making sure, hey, we don't want to kind of...
So hopefully you want to get it right the first time?
Yeah, there's also going to be a public consultation process in between all of that as well, as part of the process for that bylaw.
Okay.
I am hoping to have it, hopefully, in council for June, but it could be the July review of the whole.
Council trip then.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, this is for the bylaw officer as well, and then one more for David Reed after that on 22nd Street. But the first one, because of the river flooding, I understand there's some homeless people who have been camping on crown land who have now been displaced, and I'm just wondering if, what kind of an issue that may be causing for you, for bylaw services?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one person at this time that is refusing help. He has lost part of both of his feet through the angering from living rough for the last two years. He's been living behind this person. Mark is refusing help, however, I'm going to talk to some friends of his today to see if they will take him into their home, hopefully, before the water gets too high. Other than that, the camps are basically non-existent on the riverbanks. We did, there's a group of volunteers, uh, I am involved, uh, and not as a bylaw officer, but as a citizen. And, uh, we have removed 3,950 pounds of garbage off the riverbanks in the last month and a half. So, um, in doing so, we did not take out any active camps. We took out abandoned camps. That was it. I have not removed, I did in the last two weeks remove two active camps, um, because they were going to be on the existing bylaw for parks use, which allows them to camp from seven, uh, 7:00 PM to 9:00 AM. These were in existence at 10 o'clock in the morning. And I told them to move, they did, I removed their access.
And next question for Mr. Reed would be about the, just the 22nd Street and just an update on how to figure that.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. That's, uh, Delore Sheets' project. So I'm, I'm not quite up to speed on the scheduling.
Counselor Butler.
Just generally, though, do we have a paving crew coming in this week?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, yeah, your worship. I know that there was a bit of, um, some professional work that was done. I believe it was called a pot tapping, uh, last week. And, uh, so what that does is a professional comes in and he hot taps these, these, um, taps, I guess is what it is. But they do it live, so they don't shut the water off. Um, and so it's one of those pieces that, that I understand are done. So I imagine now that the next piece now is going to be the arrangement of, of the paving and everything. I don't have a total update from the sheets. I'm sure she is in EOC right now, but, um, if there's any further information, um, we will get back to council at a time.
Is it still anticipated that we'll be doing the paving and construction with multi, their projects?
I, I believe, your worship, that there's two different companies involved. I'm not quite sure. They, they have a different contract, I think, with somebody else. But I believe that the, uh, paving is also, uh, the parcel, which is what's happening that we still have to, as well. And then of course, the, the, um, the demolition process for GFI is also part of. I am with that as well because of the paving coming in and that's why we have the ability to get all these little pieces.
As soon as extensive paving also apparently going to go on in Greenwood. So I was just wondering if we were able to capture that company and somehow. Counselor Butler, do you have another one or Counselor Hammond?
Um, my question was answered with the silver town sidewalk. I just, I remembered we were going to do that at some time.
Counselor Hammond?
Yeah, just wondering if we have any update from, from regarding the, um, reduce speed limit at the downtown core and the four-way stops.
Your worship, I believe, uh, Miss Sheets did talk to them and we do have a little bit of data coming, but we don't have a complete report yet that we can bring in. But we do have some data that they, they spoke about here with some different areas that they had some records of where there was, um, it was some accidents, um, as opposed to where they're not. But, uh, we don't, uh, we're doing EOC, so there is some information that's sitting there as data that we haven't tracked to council yet.
Ms. Walde, did we get an update on the, um, wave bearing signs?
My sincere apologies. I think I missed you.
No worries. Um, thank you, your worship. Um, I understand David Bruce is in here, but perhaps the CEO can answer my question. Um, I see here in the building inspection report that the demolition is expected this month on the whispers of a building. And I'm just wondering what that's going to look like. I don't know how demolitions are conducted these days in the movies. It's always dynamite. If that's the case, um, is it done during this day or what are the safety concerns for nearby residents, that kind of thing? Is that something I should ask them about?
I can give you the five cent answer as opposed to the 85% answer. Um, I know that the, the risk assessment was done on it and so that was determining whether or not there was some, some materials within the building that says, just as different pieces like that. Uh, and I believe the information has come back and I believe now that there's, uh, labor in our, here in our queue, I'm not quite sure which one, that, um, he is going to be putting forward. And then that will give us the idea of who's going to be doing the job. It would be up to them to determine when the, all the best time to do it. I doubt if they would do it at night, so, um, but I'm sure that they're going to be professionals in their own way to be able to, um, get it done.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Any other questions? All the questions. Okay, all those in favor? Or do we want to have an answer? I thought this question was answered, it's a family question. He wants to know what the question is.
Uh, I wouldn't mind a refresher.
There was an update on the wave bearing signs for downtown.
Okay, uh, so, and, and I'm, I'm mixing, uh, our, our signs all, all together just because that's how I'm handling the project. Uh, so the expo sign, we got the go-ahead from highways for a refresh there in terms of doing the work there. So that's lined up for either late May or early June, depending on contractor availability. Uh, I did reach out to Ministry of Transportation, uh, to engage them in that sign review along the highway corridor. And so there, that's in, in their works right now. So it'll handle all the signs along Central Avenue that point off, uh, to, to other spots in town. And right now I'm working on a location plan for the wave bearing signs, uh, so that I'll have something that says, okay, we're going to propose putting the sign here and it's going to have this kind of symbology and what have you on it. So that, that is in progress, but it's not completely done.
Counselor Hammond?
Just a follow-up. Um, I thought that decision was already made because when we approved, when we had the community engagement on the wave bearing signs and the, the design, there was three, three options available and it came down to one that people voted on. Um, when it came back to council, there was already a map of where this, where these signs were going to be strategically placed and what they were going to contain. So are, is, are we reinventing a wheel on that or has that changed?
So it, it's changed because the, the map that came back into council was along the highway. So that piece is now being handled by Ministry of Transportation. Uh, but the small signs on the corners of, or, or just in the downtown area.
Right.
That piece is what is now being mapped out.
Any other questions?
Oh, I've got to ask. Sorry, just a quick, for our bylaw officer, I was just wondering if there's any way of enforcing unsightly premise bylaw on the tall standing dry grass next to the Canafest campground.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would have to research that before I can give you a definitive answer. I believe it may come under our fire services.
Okay. Okay. Heather's. Hearing none. I'm going to call a question. Anybody? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. All right. No information items to speak of, correspondence, no late items. So we want...
I have one for under section 12, Mr. Mayor. Reports, questions from members of council? Well, it is. Can I please ask a question? I can ask it with the public.
I just wanted to hear some agenda.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, last month, Mr. Mayor, you met with BC Housing and BASS to discuss a future site for them in Lionton City. I've asked for a report back on that at the in-camera meeting. It hasn't been included in the agenda and, uh, although I understand it is in camera, the contents of that meeting, I was just wondering when you plan on updating council on the outcome of that meeting? Or if you don't, why we haven't received a report on that?
Council will be brought up to speed as we raise this afternoon's in-camera meeting.
So will be adding it to them?
As we do, but it would be very brief. All right. We move on to question period from the public. Do we have any?
Mayor Conrad, council, staff, and citizens, thank you for this, thank you for this opportunity to, to talk. My name is Joanie Colange. Uh, I'm a GFSS alumni, albeit 1972, so it's a while ago. I've been a public school teacher for many, many years throughout BC for 30, 30 years, and I've been approved for, to be a TOC here in District 51, so I'm very honored. Today, though, I have the honor and role of being a liaison and messenger for concerned youth of Grand Forks Senior Secondary School. There's a group of students that are very distressed by the destruction of an environmental legacy that they feel belongs to them. There are plans in place also to send a delegation to the council meeting on May 22nd. Um, the questions from the students are as follows. Number one, not only does planting trees benefit the community by creating natural buffers and relocating animals, but it also would create a source that the city could use for student involvement. In what ways would industrializing these woods have helped bring the future generations of children into the community? Number two, would you be able to ensure that the wildlife population would be able to function healthily as they do now? And if not, according to the Canada Wildlife Act, would you be able to have a functioning industrial area that would be sustainable for all the wildlife that has lived in Vienna Woods in the past and still inhabits it now? Even, I'm sorry, number three, even with the tree policy in place, how would you be able to move all the living wildlife currently inhabiting areas such as the Vienna Woods into a place where they would be able to thrive? And number four, in order for the trees to grow healthily after they have been replanted, it would cost time and money. How would you be able to ensure that in the areas that the trees are planted in, no person or creature would go through them and harm the growth of those trees? After viewing the site, they have expressed to me the urgency restoring, conserving, and preserving this region for future generations. And if I might add from one last thing from a teacher's point of view or, uh, from my perch, so to speak, with such powerful inquisitions by our future leaders, please ask yourself, what opens my eyes, what touches my heart, and what makes me think more deeply? Thank you.
Counselor Hammond?
Yeah, thank you for your comments and the concerns from the, the students. I'm just wondering if they have been, um, briefed or have been watching the ongoing council meetings regarding this and the debates that have taken place and have seen the biologist's report and listened to, you know, what the developer is planning and it's, it's like, I think everything that you've mentioned has been addressed. We're very environmentally conscious. We're very concerned because we've had biologists go out there, do a study of their nesting birds. If there is a concern, there will not be a tree removed. If there's any concern with a nesting, um, bird in there, um, it was deemed that, um, there wasn't, from the biologist's report and it's just, sure, it's public, um, there wasn't a concern. And some of those trees are danger trees because they're just teetering on, but very few trees are going to actually come down. And so if, if you go back through all the discussions and debates, I think all of those answers, those questions have been answered.
I, I, do I respond to that?
If I may just comment on that to win way in, again, I will concur with Counselor Hammond's stated, all the, the questions and concerns have been adequately addressed as far as the corporation's concerned. And that is about the extent that we will go at this point. So Counselor Croft, then Counselor Tripp.
Yeah, is it possible that, um, we could provide, um, that information that we have, like the reports and stuff to the, um, students so that if they do want to do a delegation, they're more prepared? The other thing, um, that I'd be interested in finding out, have they approached the, um, school district itself because they're, um, a majority landowner there? And, and the tree property and stuff like that? Because that's something that if they go to their school, maybe they could get that property dedicated, um, so that it's safe. So if we can provide all that information to them, it'd probably be a lot easier, but it's nice to see them interested.
Just a quick comment, some of those reports are in camera.
Yeah, no, the ones that aren't in camera. Sorry.
Counselor Tripp? And Counselor Butler?
Thank you, Joanie, for, um, bringing that report and for representing those students. It seems like they're picking up on issues that, um, that surround the community and that they're interested in. And that's, that's, that's really heartwarming and something I think that we as council are, are really wanting. Um, what I'm thinking is those questions that they're asking, we do have a tree bylaw that is, uh, coming up tonight for, um, a discussion and for voting on. And I'm just wondering, those questions seem very, very pertinent, uh, to that particular bylaw. And I'm wondering if maybe those questions could be, um, received by staff and they could take a look at those and see how they might fit into or be incorporated if they aren't already in there in the bylaw.
Counselor Butler, then Counselor Croft.
Do I respond to that? Could she?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just, uh, I guess, thank you all of you. I'm just the messenger at this point and so I will pass along that information to the sponsor teachers as well as the students that are concerned about those, those issues and, um, and hopefully it would be, thank you.
And maybe send the questions this way as well to, to staff to have a look at?
Whether, yeah, whatever you, whatever you're asking.
Counselor, where's you?
Uh, your worship, just to advise, um, this, uh, collage that the delegations are accepted at the committee of the hall, which is the first meeting in June, not the end of June.
Okay, Counselor Butler, Counselor Croft, lady in the back row.
Couple of questions for staff, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of a tricky subject to talk about because a lot of it is in camera with the land sale, but it's my understanding that once a piece of property is sold, the new landowner is free to clear cut if he so chooses. If there's nesting sites on the property, um, I believe you have to wait till after nesting season and then those trees can be removed as well. So I don't see any protection once the property is sold to maintain that forest. So I just wanted to clarify that. My second question is, um, the, uh, the Ministry of Forest is, uh, I got an email from someone saying the Ministry of Forest will be hosting a series of conversational webinars in mid-May. So it'll be an opportunity to have open conversation about legislation development and the species and ecosystems at risk charter, which is being revised. So the provincial government is going to be putting stricter, um, protocols in place for protection of species at risk. And I was wondering if it'd be possible for council to participate in that webinar? And even possibly if the school kids would be able to participate in that webinar as well? I can pass along the information to staff.
Just a quick comment on that without releasing any information out of the camera. With all the processes that have gone on, all the safeguards have been put in place for that.
I was asking staff, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Watt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the standard process when there's sites of potential environmental sensitivity, uh, species at risk, uh, that kind of thing is, um, if we're concerned before any development proceeds, especially if there's city with land related, uh, uh, we actually have some extra tools in place, including covenants. So if protected nest sites are identified, uh, by a professional biologist and this relates, certainly to species at risk as well as, uh, there's certainly a number of raptors and that kind of thing. So there's the option for, um, covenants to be in place before any development can proceed. And that's, that's a standard part of the land sales process, just like dealing with county decides issues is a standard part of the process. That is something that goes above and beyond what a lot of municipalities do, uh, and in contact, um, regarding our process, uh, with biologists from the province on, on these steps that we're taking. And, uh, I believe in the consistency of the approach going forward, including the sensitive ecosystem in majority becoming a standard part of land decision process.
Thank you, Mr. Watt.
The second question was about the webinar, Mr. Mayor. It says that they're asking for local government feedback. Is it possible to participate in that?
Where's you?
I think that, uh, in relation to these, uh, these land sales that we have going in different pieces, uh, staff has already done it. You'll just, um, we have a lot of things that we have in our place, um, and I believe that we'll be doing more webinars for a bit.
Thank you. Counselor Croft?
Yeah.
And the lady in the back row.
Yeah, just, uh, another comment about reports. When I was talking about the reports, it would be like the staff reports we received and whatever else we can release. Another thing is the school district itself commissioned a study or a report. Um, I don't know if it's public. Um, but it's public that they did it, but it's not public. But if the... if the interest that you want to go to the school district and say, hey, we're concerned about this, can we have that report as well? Right? I think that would be worthwhile for them.
So as the messenger, what are the things that I need to take back to them?
They could ask their school district for any information on the reports that they got, that the school district commissioned. If we can compile some information to send to them from all of, in case they haven't been following the council, presentations, there's been presentations from the public and all that stuff, so all that can be provided to you.
Their questions.
And their questions.
And submit your prepared questions, like a list of all of them.
Yeah, that weren't answered and all that.
And again, any response from staff at this particular point in time, based on the situation we're in now with the flooding and EOC, I think will be a little bit curtailed, unfortunately, because the EOC and that takes priority right now. Otherwise, that area might need to be underwater.
Hopefully not.
And we won't have to worry about it. Lady in the back row, please.
Yeah, my name is Angie Hurdy. So from what Counselor Hammond said, she said all the reports were available in public, and it seems like a conflict of understanding. I don't, I haven't seen a biologist report.
Whatever's been discussed at council meetings is available.
I believe the wording was that there are reports available. It was not all reports. That comment was not made. And not, to the best of my knowledge, the word "all" was not used, that there are reports available, which defines them definitively that, and that's why they weren't discussed in adria. Lady in the front row.
Yes, thank you. Oh, sorry, well, I need to get it together. Kate Phillips for the Gazette. There was recently a stakeholder meeting on boundary transit, and because it was held after the B C D C, but not during the B C D C, I wasn't able to attend, and I was wondering if there was an update on the situation with boundary transit.
Yes, that will be appearing in my report this evening.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Gentlemen in the blue's third row.
Second row.
Your worship.
Could you speak up, please?
Yeah, so this land's report, you know, you're talking about, you only specifically are talking about it, it seems to be addressing the nesting of birds and, you're not giving any consideration to the age of the species of trees that are there, and all the multiple benefits they provide over and above. And I wonder if you have enough information on that? I've done in contact, other than to various environmental groups, there's an author in Nelson who wrote a very extensive book of evidence on the Columbia Basin, and the effect they have on that area, the dams were put in. Her name is Amini Kirkz, and I've talked to her, and she's willing to come over and give, spend some time and basically educate you, give you more information, and give you a better understanding of what it means, not to look at everything through one little specific guiding purpose.
With all due respect, Mr. Cook, we have, as I already mentioned numerous times, all the elements have been addressed, and we have taken comparative examples. And again, with all due respect, this individual from Nelson, her views, the situation in Nelson, but again, respectfully, this individual does not have to come here and give us an education.
Well, with all due respect to you, sir, the owl photos that I sent to all of you, although they were dated, shows.
How old were they?
Pardon?
How old were they?
About ten years old.
Thank you.
Yeah, but if you notice, they were all right on the edge of the forest at once stood, and that's what they made.
Those trees don't exist anymore, they're down.
So there's also, there's other birds nesting in the Columbia Basin, so it's more than just about the birds, is the point.
But some of this information unfortunately is archaic, I do have to say, so it's archaic. It has no relevance. We have all done all our research. We would not, as Mr. Watt said, jump into an endeavor which we do not pursue properly in the form, first and foremost. So we would not move forward if it was any way infringing on any of the situations that you're referring to. So unfortunately, that is my response.
I don't agree with you, like, you're missing a major point.
That is your privilege, I'm not missing it. Any other discussion? Lady in the second row.
Many, many physical.
Identification, please.
Gloria Cook. Many physical people have seen owls and various kinds of birds in this stand of times and very nearby. Why would you not take those accounts and visual sightings into account for this? Not all the time do you have a camera with you where you can take a picture. You have, you can, I think you can stand on visual sightings by local people.
Unfortunately, yeah, it comes under hearsay.
No, it's not hearsay.
It is hearsay.
You're calling me and many others a liar then?
That is not what I said.
That's what you're saying.
No, that's what you're saying, Miss.
You're saying I did not see it.
I will no longer discuss this, we're using name, oh, sorry. Lady in the back row.
Yeah, hi. Fred Marshall was in that forest, and that's not an archaic visit, he was just there this spring.
We've heard Mr. Marshall.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean.
He did his report, and his report hinged very closely on releasing in-camera information, so I will not discuss Mr. Marshall's report anymore.
I'm really sorry to be a witness as to some of the citizens are treated here. I think it's shocking.
Counselor Hammond.
I think that people are jumping ahead of the gun here, because you're assuming that trees are going to be removed, you're assuming that there's going to be clearcutting, and because you're not partying to the in-camera conversations with the developer or the process, you're just making assumptions without knowing the facts. This council has done due diligence, and you can't make statements that you don't know to be true. So when you turn around and say that it's going to be a clearcut, or you're going to say that that tree's going to be removed, you really don't know. So until that information is made public, you might not want to beat that fear factor.
Can I ask a question, please? Can you tell me that it won't, they won't be cut?
If you'd like to respond to that.
If I, if I may, just add this comment. I wonder if the people in the gallery aren't referring to something that is very well-known in, when people are dealing with animal species, bird species, they continue to return every year to the very same place that they went the year before. And so even while historically pictures may be from a number of years ago, those owls, those birds, they will, sure they'll migrate, but they will come back exactly the same way. And I've been a witness to that in such an amazing way this year in my own backyard, where every year I catalog, when I get a chance, all the birds that come through my backyard and come to our pond, and it's amazing. I've looked over the last couple of weeks, and even from one day to the next, in the same, in over one year, the exact same birds are in my yard. So there, this, while it may be historical, or while it may be pictures from a number of years ago, those owls, those birds, whatever's going, coming through there, will come back to that area to nest. And I think that is not something that we can't take into consideration. The other thing I just want to point out here is, in the council policy, the urban forest draft that we're looking at for tonight, it says the city will manage its urban forest for the public benefit, including, but not limited to. It's got a bunch of lists, it says habitat, and it says soil stabilization improvement, riparian area improvement, shade, windbreaks, dust control, and reduction in air pollution. We know the forests provide all of those benefits for the community.
Just a quick comment, Counselor Tripp, on your statement. I may have stated that the pictures and the documentation may be archaic. I never referred to that the ongoing return of birds is archaic. But if I may finish, please, but I also reiterated to state. But I also reiterated to state that all of those measures are being addressed. If you listen to Mr. Watt, everything is in place. I cannot discuss what is, but everything is being addressed. Council will not make a rash decision on what we are doing. So that's for the record. Counselor Croft.
Yeah, yes. I can't remember where, whether it was in a staff report, or if it was in the delegation information provided by Mr. Cook or Mr. Marshall. I remember a comment about when the city took down trees. And can't remember the exact statement, but the fact was that the wildlife just moved over. Once those trees were gone, it moved over. And if we take our land with our trees, and the school district's land with their trees, there shouldn't be a problem for wildlife.
Okay, Counselor Thompson, I believe, Counselor Hammond, one of you two.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, Counselor Tripp was present during the in-camera meetings, and was privy to all the information that we had. And unfortunately, because we can't talk about it all, but she's aware that there are solutions and that it's being solved, but to now contradict things that were discussed.
I didn't contradict the thing, Counselor Hammond, I just reiterated what the.
Counselors' order.
You're bringing up concerns to worry the community, or worry the public, and create fear of, and resist any, because.
This is parliamentary decision, please, would you please silence your.
You know the information that's been discussed in camera.
Please silence your counsel.
Counselor Tripp, if you would please cease to speak, I will take care of it. Counselor Hammond, we do not need to pursue this any further, we already get the message.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. The, the city advertised a piece of property for interest for sale. And certain members of the public, and I referenced here, selves to Jean and Gloria Cook, came and expressed concerns about that particular piece of property. Council has heard you. Council has done its due diligence. Council is working towards taking all of these issues into consideration before a final decision is made. But to, to continue to express your concerns is certainly well within your rights. But I want to assure you that they have been heard, they have been taken into consideration. There was a report that was brought forward at a regular meeting of council that was not a report, it was a report commissioned by the school district, and it was confidential, and it was made public, which is most unfortunate, it should not have been. And I think that once, once a decision is made on this, and we can make the information that we have, and any reports that we may have commissioned that at this time are in camera, will be made public. So I want to assure you that your concerns and considerations are being taken into account before any decision is made.
Just a quick comment on that statement, Counselor Thompson, dependent on what is in those reports? Not everything will be released. Just so I can get a clarification on that, it is dependent on what it affects and what it impacts.
Yes.
Especially if there's any individuals impacted on this. Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on our tree policy tonight, just in case people aren't here for it. And one of the questions I was going to be asking, and I think is relevant for the residents' concerns, is that, you know, this council's taken very seriously our natural capital assets. We've wanted to classify our natural capital assets, put a value on our natural capital assets, not just monetarily, but also with respect to the benefits that they provide to the community for ecological, air quality, those types of things. So because we place such a value on natural capital assets, our residents are also saying, hey, these are our trees that you're now selling off. Say there's a hundred trees in that block of land. Under our tree policy, are we now going to be required to replace double? Are we now going to plant 200 trees because we're selling them? Whether or not they're clearcut, they're still going out of the public's domain, they still no longer belong to the people of this town. We are selling off their assets, and hey, are we now going to compensate them for the loss of those trees by replanting 200 trees somewhere else in the community to replenish that asset that we're disposing of? So I think that's something we can take into consideration tonight, when we look at that policy.
Again, Counselor Butler, that is a presumption, because we have no idea yet should there even be any trees removed.
No, no, we're selling them, so we no longer own them. Where are we selling them? We're selling a piece of land that has trees on it, so it no longer belongs to the people in.
But as long as whoever purchases the property respects the environmental aspect of it, it is irrelevant.
It no longer belongs to the people of this town, that's right. Right, so they're wanting compensation for their trees that we're selling. That's what they're asking.
Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Croft.
Well, you, your worship, sort of said what I was going to say, and that is, the city is selling land. If there is a need, there are auctions, covenants, that can be placed on that, if there is that a concern with regards to trees. Other than that, whether it's private property, and if the private property owner determines that something needs to be removed, then it comes out of the city's hands, and we don't, we would not be replacing trees that were removed by an individual who owned that land.
Yeah, because they're on private land. Counselor Croft.
Yeah, one thing that's not getting mentioned amongst all the trees and stuff are the benefits of the land sale to the residents of the city of Grand Forks. So there is trees there, there will be trees there, and it's, people are throwing out the word "clearcut," especially if you've already have all the information from the in-camera, and you know that's not true. If you throw it out in the conversation, then again, it upsets the public and stuff, and you know full well that all you're doing is fear mongering.
You already clearcut half that section when you were on council last time, Counselor Croft. You were responsible for clearcutting half of the Vienna Woods last time. You were on that council that clearcutted.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for the interruption, Ms. Roberts rules. Okay, Counselors. Anyways, no, the, the.
You're not going to agree that I don't either.
The point being, that city will, the community benefits jobs, taxes, there will be food produced there, so that brings in all kinds of food security issues and stuff.
They'll be food produced there, Counselor Croft?
Yeah, yeah.
On that line?
Herbs are not food.
They're going to produce herbs on that line?
Counsel.
I don't know, you know, are you?
We're getting into question here, it's going off the deep end.
Yeah, anyways.
That's it, we're done.
Okay.
I usually don't end conversations because you have unlimited time, but this is getting very close now to the fine line, and I might call it, it's being tested here, so go ahead.
First off, just to clarify, the report that was given by the school board, it was given to Fred Marshall and myself to use, so it was not ascertained in any legal or strictly.
From my understanding, from one of the trustees.
No.
Did he have the assurance that he was able to release that to the public?
We had full permission to use that report from Janet.
Counselor Butler, please speak when you're spoken to, under your hat.
So that was a legitimate use of that report, that was approved.
To our C A O.
I just wanted to ask, are you suggesting that this is, just a minute before the property is sold, there are going to still be, going to be public hearings?
From what I understand, if the report given by the school district doesn't be down to report.
Okay, so we just got a clarification, it was a redacted report that you had. And.
Deputy, sorry, get another version. So, yeah, so there was a redacted report released to Mr. Fred Marshall and Mr. Cook. However, that wasn't the version that was presented to council. It was the unredacted version of the report that was submitted.
We produced an unredacted report, we only have the one report.
Whatever way you acquired it, it was the unredacted. Whatever way you acquired it, it was the unredacted one, so I cannot comment on what you had, so.
But I just wanted to know, is there going to be a public hearing then before the sale of this property, sir?
A public hearing for what reason?
As to what, you still haven't answered the question that the secondary students are asking about keeping the forest in its entirety. So do they not have a chance to speak to this?
I have, I have one question for you, Mr. Cook. How much longer are you going to go on with this?
I just needed an answer to those simple questions.
Your constant persistence on this matter has already been decided by council. It was stated by another counselor just a few minutes ago that even though we share your concerns, they're all been addressed and it's done.
Most of Vienna Woods is on school district property. The vast majority of all those trees are on school district property. And what the city property has, they are looking into mitigating any problems. So your answers, your questions have all been answered and discussed.
And they're also based on presumption because like I'd stated earlier, like Mr. Watt had stated, we are in the process, should anything happen during the course of whatever entails in that industrial section, it will be addressed. This is not one of these situations where we just close our eyes to it and it moves forward. So with all due respect, can you grasp that concept that I was stating?
I can grasp that concept. But I wonder how are you going to produce the removal of more trees?
We don't know if there's any trees being removed, sir. You were presuming again, we have stated this... Basically, the bottom line, if you're right, we're beating a dead horse here.
Further?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't you want to be prepared to address if...
We are.
What makes you think we are?
We are prepared. I have just stated this numerous times. This is not a unilateral decision by the individual regarding this property. This, the city is totally on board with this. With all due respect, do you grasp that concept that we are not abandoning the situation?
And the trees that are still left on the three acres are they going to stay?
Again, we don't know which trees are even being removed. If there are any being removed... But I cannot discuss any further on that because then we go deeper into an area which is not open for discussion with the public. But you have the assurance that we are looking at this and monitoring it. Period, end of story, that's it. If I may be so blunt, with all due respect.
There's no respect there.
Councilor Butler, I don't need your opinion if it's respect or not.
Sorry, may I just ask one more? The concern for some of the students when we went up to this, to that site was if they will be able to go there in future to take pictures as part of their photography media club or whatever. So if that piece is sold, then probably it'll be up to the...
That'll be dependent on the individual that owns it because then it becomes private property.
Yeah.
I mean, I cannot discuss and give a yes they can because that's not in my purveyance to do that.
But the school district property?
Yeah.
Right. Same trees.
Right.
Same wildlife.
And I'm sure if there's any major concerns, I'm almost convinced that they will be allowed because why would they not be?
Okay, that's great, thank you.
I'm just going out on a limb, don't quote me on that 100%, but I'm pretty sure that the relationship that's there, everything is being monitored, everything is being taken care of in its proper protocol and procedures. And I do not know, sitting in this chair, how much more I can say.
No, I appreciate that, the reassurance sounds very positive. And I just, and I will relay that to the students too. They were just concerned with the devastation that's already been done. So that's, I think, what they wanted to do is to be able to take pictures.
This is not a cut and dried issue, maybe that's a better way to phrase it. This is not cut and dried. You know, that the land is sold and etc., whatever, and we wash our hands of it. Council does not operate that way.
It sounds like that you have a lot of place and that there is the reassurance that citizens, concerned citizens are able to...
We understand, we receive the concerns of the citizens. We hear them and we respect them and we are addressing them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or is everybody out of breath?
No.
Gentleman in the back room?
Okay, I'm not going to flog this dead horse. You know, it's not going to stop. I mean, really, people's passions are inflamed. They just won't listen to what you think is a reasoned argument. It just doesn't work out that way. This'll dog you totally, actually. You can expect that. But irrespective of all that, it would be nice if the students were able to see the deliberation over what they have brought here, but they wouldn't have been able to see it live today because unfortunately, technical issues with Google Chrome forced me to not use YouTube. Today, you're live streaming on Facebook and I know that they won't let them watch Facebook at the school, so... But yes, you've been live streaming on Facebook, missed the first 15 minutes, just, so yeah.
So we have a semi-form of in-camera?
I guess you could say.
Will you be posting this meeting on?
Oh, yeah, it'll still be posted on and I give it to Shaw and they put it on TV, provided I get it there in time. Yeah, we'll be able to review it.
So you're telling me my assurances that I just echo it out, we're not going to be seen?
Not for a couple of days.
So the students will be able to watch that portion?
Oh, yes, they will.
On YouTube?
Yeah.
Of this discussion that we've had?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm a techno peasant, forgive me, so I'm not too familiar with how that all works, so. I'm from Mayans, I'm into...
Do we have any more questions? Hearing non-motion to adjourn, please. Councilor Tripp, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.